Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Malley Rosado, and I am the Council President for the Court of Common Council for the City of Hartford, and I'm calling to order this committee of the whole meeting of August 16, 2021. And I have to say that I'm really looking forward for the appointment of interim Chief Barco. As I see on the screen, I'm going to name my council colleagues that are with us this evening, and that is Councilman Sanchez, Councilwoman Shirley Sargent, Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman John Gale, our Majority Leader, Councilman TJ Clark. We also have our attorney, which I saw him, Howard Rifkin, Hartford Public Access TV, and some members of our public, which I am going to ask they remain in mute status for this appointment throughout the meeting, please. For some... Can you hear me? For some housekeeping, we do have the appointment of Chief Barco this evening. There will be no questions addressed to the council body or to Chief Barco throughout the process of this committee of the whole meeting. For members of the community, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcasted and recorded by Hartford Public Access Television and can be viewed via Hartford Public Access TV Facebook page, Compax Xfinity Channel 96, www.hpatv.org, or Channel 6032 for Frontier customers. Spanish interpretation is provided through a partnership with the City of Hartford and the Hartford Public Library. Additional accommodations can be made available through my office when requested in writing. With that said, I am going to read our agenda item today is the appointment of our interim Chief Barco to Hartford Fire Chief. And I am going to read the appointment letter that was sent to the mayor to council. A task for your consideration is a resolution confirming the appointment of interim Chief Rodney Barco to the position of Chief of the Hartford Fire Department. As you know, Chief Barco has served as Acting Director since Chief Freeman became Chief of the Fire Department in Oakland in California in April. Chief Barco is a lifelong Hartford resident who graduated from A-1 Prince Technical High School before serving in the United States Marine Corps. He joined the Hartford Fire Department in 1995 before being promoted to Lieutenant in 2010 and Captain in 2016. He was appointed Assistant Chief in 2018, and as you all know, he was appointed to interim Fire Chief this year. In his 25 years as a Hartford firefighter, he's earned the trust and respect of the department, especially as a leader in the department over the last decade. I am confident that, under his leadership, the Hartford Fire Department will continue to be one of the very best in the nation. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully, Mayor Luke Bronin. And now I'm going to read the resolution introduced by Mayor Bronin to the Court of Common Council, City of Hartford, dated August 9, 2021. Whereas, the mayor, Luke Bronin, has nominated interim Chief Barco for the position of Chief of the Hartford Fire Department, now therefore be it, and the resolve clause that the Court of Commons Council hereby confirms the appointment of interim Chief Barco to the position of Chief for the Hartford Fire Department effective upon the date of confirmation. And I have to say that I'm very excited today, and before I turn the floor over to interim Chief Barco for his opening statement to council, once he's done with that, I will open it up to my council colleagues for questions. I have to say that I'm very excited about this appointment because here we have a man who served our country in the Marine Corps, thank you, Chief Barco, for your service, who has gone through the ranks in the Fire Department and is now going through the process of being nominated Fire Chief. Chief, it's an honor to have met you and worked with you on a daily basis. With that said, I am opening up the floor so that you can address this council body with your opening statement. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, President, Council, Rosado. I definitely appreciate the nomination and the trust that Mayor Bronin has in me, and I thank you all for letting me speak before the council this evening. First of all, I want to introduce my team that I have with me here tonight. As you can see, I have Assistant Chief Riley, Chief of Support Staff, Superintendent Madden in charge of Equipment Maintenance Division. At the end down there, you see Chief Erickson, he's in charge of our Training Division. And over here, you have our Fire Marshal Chief Sharif. And at the end, our Strategic Managing Planner, Leo Siri. He does a lot of our R&amp;D and special research as it pertains to radios, computers, firehouse alerting, things of that nature. Again, I want to thank the council for having me on this evening. My name is Rodney Barco. I'm a lifelong resident of the city, and I wanted to let you all know that this appointment to Fire Chief means more to me than just having the title. It's not one of those things that, for me in particular, is something you put on your resume. I've served this city for my entire adult life, the majority of it, and I've come to love the things that I do. I grew up in the city, I went to school in the city. I've been afforded so many opportunities because of this city, and now that I'm in a position to give back as a whole, that's something I'm willing to do and it's something I want to do. The men and women that I've served on this department with honor, integrity, dedication to duty, you know, it's been a great experience, and I want to continue that effort. I want to do it for my friends, my family, all my colleagues who all reside in the city and the visitors alike. This is a wonderful, diverse city that we live in, and I want to continue to serve it as best I can. I know that there will be some challenges, and in the last three years as Assistant Chief of Ops, I've met those challenges on a day-to-day basis, whether it's going to a fire in the middle of the night, EMS, or technical rescue in another town, or serving as the Incident Commander for Capital Region Hazmat, which we respond throughout the entire state. Those are some of the things that I enjoy doing. I enjoy conflict resolution. You know, I learned those skills in the military when dealing with other soldiers. It's a very intense and difficult process when you're teaching a young 18, 19-year-old person how to prepare, arm, and get ready, demolitions and munition of military grade. That's something that is... You have to have that instilled in you, and it carried over into the fire service of me. So I'm honored to continue to serve. I've been serving. I love this city, I love this department, everything about it. I spent my entire career from the most important position, I think, in terms of advancement as District Chief Aid. And in that, serving in that position in itself, you get to see the department operationally as a whole. You get to learn from different Deputy Chiefs and Chiefs that make the jump to that position, and you take certain things from them, the experiences that they have and what they teach you, and you parlay that on to the next position as Lieutenant. And when you become a Lieutenant, you have men and women under your command, right? So those things you learn along the way as you start to advance in rank, and then when you become Captain, you take on more responsibility, whether it's in charge of the entire house or in charge of two apparatuses or even being Incident Command. Those are some of the things that we do on a daily basis, and I've never shied away from a challenge. And anyone that knows this department from 20 years ago to now, we've gone through a lot of changes, and there were a lot of challenges back then. And we're finally in a place where we can make the rest of the world stand up and look at us, and that's what we've been doing, and that's what I want to continue to do. And so with the opportunity that's granted to me and with the council's blessing, I would love to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks, Chief Barco. Hello to all your staff who's there with you. It is 8 o'clock.
Hello.
Thank you for being there with the chief. And so now, I am going to... Actually, before I open it up to my councils for questions, before the meeting went live, Councilman Sanchez had asked you about the stripes that you have in your uniform, and I would like for you to give us a little lecture here on those stripes before I open it up to our council colleagues.
Yes, ma'am. The four stripes here represent your rank, which is, this is still Assistant Chief, so I need one more stripe. And then the hash marks represent the years of service, which is, as you can see, it's 20 years, but I need another stripe to give me over 25 years. And also, you can get a red hash mark, which denotes that you served in the military.
Wonderful.
So I'm pretty humble with and fiscally responsible and not spending the city's money. So that's why I still have the same uniform I have when I came on.
Wonderful to hear. Okay, with that said, I'm going to open up the floor to my council colleagues for questions or comments. Majority Leader Clark, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and Chief Barco. I thank you for your service. It is an honor to actually be working with you. Since I've been on council, I've found you to be a very knowledgeable person within the Fire Department, and I would say very humble at most, which I do applaud, because I don't think I've ever seen you up here. But the people that I've spoken with since I've been on council have always spoke highly of you, and I tell you, you're so humble, I didn't even recognize, I didn't even know of your, of all of your qualifications and certifications until I read, I reviewed your resume. And I would say that you are highly respected amongst the colleagues that I have spoken to and a highly decorated firefighter, and I think that, you know, we should applaud your service and also too, you are somebody that many young men and women, but particularly young men, young boys in our city can actually look up to, to see themselves in you, as you are, you resemble Hartford, and also too with how you have, you know, served your country and then came back home to become a firefighter, to take on that great responsibility of protecting, going from protecting our country to protecting our city. And I think what speaks volumes of your credentials and why the mayor has, did appoint you, and I did note to the mayor, I was very surprised that he appointed you so quickly, because most department heads that we have seen have had a longer tenure as either interim or acting department head than you have. And so I think that actually speaks to your character and your credibility and your ability to manage the men and women in our Hartford Fire Department. And so, thank you for, thank you for your service. I do look forward to working with you. And one question that I have is, what have you seen since your time as a fighter, as from a firefighter going all the way up and around to Assistant Chief, that has been a turning point in your, in your career? And how would you actually take the Fire Department from this level to the next level under your leadership?
Thank you, Councilman Clark, and that's a great question. For me, what I've seen is the evolution of the department, right? From everything from the services rendered to the technology that we use now. I can remember back when I was at Ladder 6 and the first thermal imaging camera we had was in the form of a helmet, and it weighed about 25 pounds. And if you were assigned to the roof, you were responsible for that. Now, our thermal imaging cameras is something that you hang on your coat, almost the size of, you know, an older cellphone. But in terms of technology, we have gone a long way with detecting poisonous gases to being able to find individuals in an IDLH and smoke-filled environment. The training has excelled as well. Our Heavy Rescue Unit is one of the best in the country, and they have all of the rescue technician disciplines, from trench rescue to machinery and vehicle rescue, confined space, rope rescue, and the only two that there are remaining is swift water and building collapse. And to speak to the second half of your question, those are some of the rescue technician courses that I'm seeking to pursue, working with leadership and M&amp;B to secure those fundings, because it is a very expensive class, but not only that, to improve the level of services that we give to the community. When I go out to the firehouses, I ask individuals, what can we do to assist you in better doing your job? And whatever I can provide for the firefighters out in the field will improve the level of service that we give to the citizens. So my goal moving forward is to improve the level of services for our community and our visitors alike, and then also increase the level of training for the men and women out in the field.
Thank you, Chief, for that explanation. And one thing I wanted to know too, I do respect the fact of, as far as your level of service, coming in as a firefighter and staying the course and working your way through the ranks to become what you are now, I think that is highly commendable, and a lot of people need to take note of your service. The second thing, and I will conclude with this, regarding the Class 1 designation of the Hartford Fire Department, what is that going to take to remain as a Class 1 designation?
Yes, sir. So our ISO Class 1 designation, it consists of four categories. One is the Fire Department, two is Communications, three is our Water Supply, and then Community Risk Reduction, and you receive a certain amount of points for each category. So as long as we maintain the level of service, our water supply is our water supply. It's unparalleled when we look at our surrounding towns. We have a tremendous water supply, so we won't have to worry about losing points in that. We just need to maintain the level of service as far as the Fire Department. And since we're accredited, we can look at what we're doing and what we need to do to improve or maintain a high level, so that wouldn't be a problem. And our Community Risk Reduction, as you all know, is off the charts. We hit about 116,000 homes in 2019, and then 2020 it slowed down, but we're picking them back up. So we constantly work each and every day to maintain our Class 1 designation, and we have our Strategic Manager, Leo Siri down there. He maintains our accreditation and our ISO rating as well.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Councilman Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, chief. So, you know, TJ basically asked the questions that I was interested to hear, but there is one question I'd like to learn more about is the fire cadets. I know that there's a difference between the fire cadets and the police cadets as far as where the benefits are, as far as the pay, and as far as the training. When you... What are your decisions or what is your thoughts about improving that as far as the fire cadets and their experience?
So our fire, we're slotted for six cadets, and the issues that we have, the differences between our cadets and the police cadets is, police cadets are full-time. Our cadets are mainly part-time, 20 hours a week, and they have to maintain college courses and still have a job. So it's a little difficult for them to do that on a steady basis. What I would like to see is somehow getting our cadets to a full-time status so that they don't have to have a job and go to school and do fire cadet training. So the 20 hours a week helps them tremendously when we're trying to prepare them for their academy. It's just the rest of life's little issues that they have to deal with that makes it difficult for them to maintain it. So every now and then, you'll have a cadet drop out because of those issues that they have maintaining a job and paying bills and living on their own and still trying to be a cadet. But I think it'd go a long way if we could get them full-time.
Right, I agree. And then now, is this program a part of union negotiations or is this with the city? Because I never, I don't remember ever being involved in agreements when it comes to cadets.
No, sir, it's not a, it's not a union program.
So what improvements can the council assist you in?
Well, sir, if we, if we can get together, draw up a draft, and work around getting them a full-time position, but still maintain the educational status, I think that would help a long way, go a long way.
And that was the only question, because Councilman, Majority Leader Clark, asked the other questions. But moving forward, I do have a statement. I'm extremely proud to be one of the council members here, supporting you and seeing you to the top number-one position in the HFD. I'm also a Marine, I understand, you know, what you're talking about. I appreciate your service. I will say that everyone I have spoken to, and I mean literally everyone, supports you. Your firefighters, your team, they highly respect you. The community highly respects you, and those who've been around you and met you and had conversations with you have nothing, nothing but great things to say about you. So I'm very proud to be one of the voting members here, to see you move upward and support us and serve as the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Semper Fi.
Semper Fi.
Thank you, Councilman Sanchez. Councilwoman Rosetti.
Hello, interim Chief Barco, how are you?
Good, ma'am, how are you?
Pretty good. I also just have a statement. I really, it really is something that I love to see when someone is promoted from within. I think that's so important, not only in City of Hartford and other institutions, and I wish that happened more. I wish that was recognized. I wish people were recognized for service. I wish people were recognized more for experience. Certainly, people who go on to earn higher educations, kudos to them, but I also give people kudos for putting the time in and the effort and having exemplary work life. So I thank you, and I thank you as a lifelong resident, and congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosetti. Councilwoman Sargent, followed by Councilman Gale.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Chief Barco, congratulations on the mayor recommending you to be our Fire Chief in the City of Hartford. I sit here tonight with tears in my eyes, because I think you remember the former Fire Chief, John B. Stewart.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things he always aimed at within the Fire Department is our young people in the City of Hartford, working on behalf of their community, either police or fire, and you certainly exemplify what he tried to start out doing over 40, 50 years ago, where he wanted young men like yourself, who have begun at the beginning of being a firefighter. He wanted us to make sure we can bring you out into the community and take our youth, whether they are black or brown, and said, this is what success looked like. So you certainly exemplified that. So thank you very much for wanting to continue to serve the city. Thank you for serving the city in the military and continuing your service. My question is regarding the Class 1 designation of the Fire Department. What is your vision to keep that designation, and what is it that your goals are to continue it? And how can we, you know, make the City of Hartford Fire Department, you know, better than Class 1 if there's something bigger than Class 1? I have no clue. But what would you do to continue that and for the next step that the City of Hartford can take under your leadership?
Yes, ma'am. Well, just to let you know, we are bigger than Class 1, because we're a Class 1 and accredited, so we've stepped, we've stepped our game up quite sufficiently. But to your point, I think the communication to the communities and the public about exactly where our Class 1 designation rating gets us, and that's lower insurance premiums. And we do that through our Community Risk Reduction Special Services Unit. So that helps us in twofold. It helps us, it helps the citizens save money, and it helps us to inform them about fire prevention. With our Special Services Unit in our FMO's office, we're able to significantly spread that information around. And having buy-in from the department that participates in the, in our accreditation process, they get to see exactly why we send four engines to a box or exactly why we have Community Risk Reduction. The other thing we're doing is, ISO is coming out with a new format that will be, that the public will be able to look, look at every day on a daily basis through a website, and they can go on and see exactly what our rating is and how we maintain our rating. So our goal moving forward is to be as transparent as possible and let the community and the citizens and residents know that this is what it takes to keep our city great and keep our Fire Department and municipal services operating at the highest level possible.
Thank you. Just one other question for you, Madam Chair, and I think Councilman Sanchez really started talking about it, and that's our youth, you know, that we need to use you as an example for them to get, you know, to become cadets and realize that this is a success they can do if they stay within our city, you know, and move up within the system. And then number two also is, as you talked about fire reduction, our city, unfortunately, one of my issues is the education of our community to actually get fire insurance, you know, because we have a lot of rental units in our city. And, you know, so how can you focus on that as the Fire Chief, you know, with helping, with educating our resident to know of all the fire prevention and to get fire insurance as an insurance should any disaster happen?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So so currently, when we have a fire in a particular neighborhood or residence, we do what we call uh a blitz campaign after the incident. And we canvass uh a two-block radius wherever the fire occurred with literature about fire prevention. We replace uh smoke detectors if needed, smoke detector batteries, and then we hand out insurance information. Uh currently, we're looking at different uh insurance agencies to partner with so we can do a presentation booth um at certain venues that around the city and and different NRZ locations where we can have these individuals come out and speak to the community as to what it takes and how little it costs to actually get renters insurance.
Great. That's a great plan. Please let us know what we can do from the council side uh to help you attain those goals. And again, congratulations and thank you so very much for all your services uh to the residents of our city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Surgeon. Councilman Gail.
Thank you, Madam President, and uh good evening, uh Chief Barco.
Thank you, Councilman Gail.
The uh you you've already very clearly um you you've had to impress the two co-chairs of Public Safety Committee. So your toughest critics, I I I I've heard there's comments already. And uh obviously, I'm deeply impressed. Uh I will say just on a, on a very personal note, I uh suffered a fire in my house in two thousand and eight. It was a rather substantial fire. And uh Hartford Fire responded, and I was just amazed. And I tell the story uh to anyone who wants to listen uh just how uh impressed I was with the degree of coordination and the degree of mitigation uh of losses so that uh in in my case, while one crew was up on the roof of my porch uh fighting a fire on the second floor, another crew was down below them on the first floor, removing furniture, uh taking paintings off the walls, rolling up carpets uh and protecting against further damage from uh from the water that was coming in. And after it was all done, they came in and as my friend Bob Agnew says, they did a man cleanup. Uh you know, picked up some of the rough stuff in our bedroom uh and and took it away. Uh so I was just left, you know, I mean, oh, as a lifelong Hartford guy and friends in the in the Fire Department. I've always uh been impressed with our Fire Department. And to Councilwoman Surgeon's point, I hung around with John Stewart for many, many years uh and been impressed with John Stewart. But that firsthand experience as somebody needing the services of Hartford Fire in a big way was was so impressive. Um and I know that um the the department has strived since then to continue uh that level of um uh service and even improve it well beyond that, I'm sure. So uh thank you for everything you've done. I look forward to working with you uh in your new capacity. Um and uh good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Gail. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilman Sanchez?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion if you're ready uh to hear it.
I believe we are.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we send this resolution and approve and vote uh positively. But of course, we have to send it to council very favorably.
A motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any questions, any discussions? Any questions, any discussions? There being none, all in favor of sending the appointment of Chief Barco to counsel with a favorable uh recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's everyone.
Hey, if you can't vote for yourself, who can?
With that said, um this uh resolution is being sent to council with a favorable recommendation uh for the appointment of Intern Chief Rodney Barco to Chief of the Higher, of the Hartford uh Fire. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you to my colleagues and everyone um who are with us um via Facebook. Um have a good evening. And again, congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye.
I enjoy working with you all. Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care.